I call this meeting to order. For all those that care too, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we come together and service to our community. We pray for our city, our council, our staff, as we make decisions that affect our community. May we all find purpose, hope, and strength, and may we all be a beacon of light in the world that surrounds us. Forever grateful, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, good evening and welcome. We're going to go ahead and start off with our citizens' participation. And this evening, we do have a citizen for citizens' participation. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and call up Mr. Kevin Cash.
So this is encouraging. I made a Facebook post on September the 2nd. A lot of people liked it, and Darren invited me to come and read it to you guys. My hope is it'll encourage you. I'm sure you guys deal with a lot of discouraging stuff, but it's a four-minute read, so I'm going to get right into it. I'm just going to read it, and here we go. Today was the last day Rush was open, and I have a really cool story to tell you about the addition. Last summer at my niece's birthday party at the Republic Pool, we were sitting on the far side where the addition was under construction. I looked out and I saw the tractors digging the trenches. I immediately looked over at the starting line of the disc golf course and realized it wasn't there. It used to start beside the Huna. In a hurry, I started pointing my finger, and I started asking people what was going on. Why are they digging over there? Somebody told me that they're putting in a big, giant lazy river. My first thought was, wow, that's over the top. I began to ask around, and everybody seemed to agree with me. A lot of people were saying the same thing on Facebook. It seems like a lot for a local pool, I thought. To be honest, I was slightly discouraged because I had worked hard on the disc golf course. Let me explain. In 2004, at the Ash Grove Park, I played disc golf for the first time. It was something I'd never seen before, and it was super cool and interesting. I thought it would be nice for Republic to have one. So in 2005, at the age of 17, I decided to come before a town meeting and propose putting in a disc golf course. Being young, I was pretty nervous, and I wanted to do my research and have everything ready to go. So I spent a lot of time and energy putting something together. I wanted a really good proposal. So I called the Ash Grove City Hall and spoke to a lady. She was extremely helpful and gave me everything I needed. We had a long conversation about statistics, usage, pricing, and so on. She gave me everything I needed to put together a convincing argument. When we were saying our goodbyes, the last thing she told me was that Republic would go for it. This caught me off guard. I thought to myself, how would she know that they were going to say yes or no? That's impossible for somebody to know, I was thinking. Also, I figured me being young, they wouldn't understand nor care. I asked her, how do you know Republic will do it? The words she said, I will never forget. They resonated with my soul, and it's the reason I'm making this post. She said, because Republic is a cool town. I thought to myself, why is a lady from Ash Grove City Hall telling me how cool Republic is? Probably because it is. She was right, and I knew it. Many people had said this to me over the years. They say that there is a spirit or an energy to a town, and this lady was picking up on it 20 years ago. So in 2005, I went to a town meeting and signed up to speak. There were a bunch of really angry farmers discussing how to fix the traffic problem. I won't go into detail because it's a touchy subject, but what I was wanting to discuss seems so unimportant in comparison. I was so nervous because of the anger and the tension in the room. I started going over statistics and explaining to everybody how popular and fun it would be. I started going over the statistics on cost, and somebody finally stopped me. They told me that they had already decided to put in a disc golf course, and they had just hired a guy to build it a week previously. They offered to put me in contact with them and were confident I could help with the designs of the course if interested. I thought about it for a second and thanked them for the offer, then said, no, all I want is a disc golf course. I don't care how it's built. At that, I picked up my paperwork and left. Six months later, I found myself playing on the course. I was a little discouraged when I saw the addition to the Aquatic Center because I had worked so hard on making sure that Republic had a disc golf course. But a thought popped into my mind. What are the odds that the one thing that brought the disc golf course to life is also the one thing that knocked it out? At least the starting line. You're just too cool, Republic. Today, on the very last day the Rush was open, I got to experience it, and I must say, it is much cooler than the disc golf course. Since you guys knocked out the starting line to my disc golf course, smiley face, I vote we do something even more over the top in the future, and let Republic forever be known as a cool town.
Sounds great to me. Thank you, Mr. Cash, for sharing that with us very much. And I was interested in that post, too. I'd heard about that. I saw, got to see that post, and just the history of that. I was up here making some of the decisions upon the lazy river part. We may have even had some people up here on decisions all the way back then on the disc golf course. But, you know, it's really neat to hear and see that history, and then to see that come back, and then see your excitement of it and your involvement in that. So that's really cool. And now it's a part of history for forever on our video. So that's really awesome.
And a lot of citizens at first thought it was over the top, but now it's like, everybody loves it, man. It's great.
Everybody knows we're cool.
Yeah, I thought we were so cool.
We are. Thank you very much for sharing that. Does council have anything they would like to add to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I would just like to say, Mr. Cash, thanks for coming in. It's not always that we hear good feedback, and thanks for coming in, taking your time to do that. And thanks for sharing the story to not just us, but, you know, publicly, where different ones can see it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Thank you, Mr. Cash. Moving on to our consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items one through four on the agenda. Seeing there are none, I now need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to board, commissions, and committees scheduled. We have a city council workshop on September the 24th, 2024, at 11:00 a.m. at the Builds Building. We have a city council meeting October the 1st, 2024. The Board of Adjustment meeting that was on October the 3rd, 2024, has been canceled. We have a planning and zoning meeting on October the 7th, 2024. We have a city council meeting on October the 15th, 2024. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number five. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-52 by title only, please.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into a developer agreement with Walmart Stores East LP for the construction of public water main improvements at Lot 7 of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Seeing there is none, we will move to the final passage. I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-52, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number six. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-55 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the city's acceptance of certain grant funds and contribution of local match funding for public improvements included in the MM realignment project, Green County Job Number 8SO836D.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Ms. Haynes here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Community Development Director. The Community Development Department is requesting approval authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement with MoDOT for acceptance of grant wards and authorizing matching funds for public improvement projects on MoDOT's MM realignment project or Project D. Council approved a resolution on April 11th, 2023, authorizing supplemental for grant funding for a multi-use path and pedestrian underpass for the realignment project. We were then awarded these grant fundings in August of 2023. The multi-use trail consists of approximately 2,800 linear feet along the new alignment of the MM realignment with the grant award of $219,353, making the city's match $54,838. The pedestrian underpass will connect the multi-use path to future planned pedestrian facilities along the Project D. The grant award is $127,511, with the city's match at $31,878. The agreement also formalizes the city's contribution of $436,266 held in escrow by the city from Amazon for required improvements at MM and West Farm Road 160. This money will be used by MoDOT in the realignment projects roundabout at this intersection. MoDOT is currently working on final plans and right-of-way plans for the realignment project with letting expected in May of 2025. The project is managed in its entirety by MoDOT. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing that there are none, make sure you get with staff if you have any questions before our next reading. Moving on to item number seven. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-56 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a developer agreement with Empire District Electric Company for parking lot access for the future Morris Park on West State Highway 174.
Thank you, Laura. And we've got Ms. Duncan here this evening.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan. I'm an engineer in the Builds Department. The item I have tonight is a developers' agreement between Empire Electric, which is also known as Liberty Utilities, and the city, in which Liberty would donate a portion of their land along Highway 174 to the city in exchange for us incorporating their stormwater improvements into our larger project at the adjacent property. And the intended use of the donated property is to be a parking lot for the future Joshua Morris Park project. With that, staff is recommending approval.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? No questions from council. Thank you, Stephanie. And if we have any more additional questions, make sure you get staff with before our next meeting. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number eight, 24-R-38. A resolution of the city council awarding the bid for stormwater materials for the Iron Grain Lane Project to Skirlock Industries of Springfield Incorporated. I now need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-38, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Mr. Faleek here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Angel Faleek, city engineer. So the Builds Department solicited bids for stormwater materials for, related to a capital improvement project at Iron Grain Lane. The improvements include replacement of an undersized double box culvert, street widening with the installation of curb and gutter and sidewalk. Skirlock was the lone bidder to supply the materials for the project at $111,000. We request an additional 5% for possible contingencies, and the not-to-exceed amount being requested tonight is $117,000. The expenses for this project will be paid for out of the street budget, with the exception of the double box culvert, which will be paid for out of the stormwater fund. With that said, staff recommends approval, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Gurkhi?
So that's the west, what, the south-east corner, I guess, of the intersection there? That's where it's going through?
Right. So the current Phase 1 of Major's Development, it's that road going in where Habanero's is.
Okay.
It's that.
And it'll stop there at that point for future stuff, and then, so it could be stubbed in for?
Right.
Yep.
It ends at the multifamily development.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Do we have any additional questions from council? Is it pretty common to only have one respondent to a bid on things like storm culvert? I know there's not very many people around here that do that sort of thing.
Right. We had one supplier that reached out to us, but they said they got a contract with Green County, and they didn't have as much time to prepare a bid supplemental for this, so it's just unfortunate.
Sure. Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Moving on to item number nine, 24-R-39. A resolution of the city council authorizing supplemental agreement number three for the Schuler Creek Trail Project STPG-6900 (813) with Olson Engineering for additional engineering services in the amount of $64,113.85. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-39, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Ms. Haynes here to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Department is requesting authorization for the city administrator to enter into a third supplemental agreement for engineering services with our design engineer, Olson, for the Schuler Creek Trail Project. This agreement modifies the original agreement dated January 11th, 2021, for additional design services for trail alignment after continued negotiations with adjacent property owners. This agreement is for a not-to-exceed amount of $64,113.85. We will be providing a resolution authorizing a contract for construction of the trail at the October 1st council meeting, and we are recommending approval.
That's exciting.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Gurkhi?
So October's bid, do we have a ballpark estimated start time?
Yes, we plan to issue a notice of proceed mid-October if it's approved by council on October 1st.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Moving on to item number 10, 24-R-40. A resolution of the city council authorizing execution of a task order for engineer-owner agreement for Task Order Number 16 with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated relating to Phase 1 of the Water Master Plan Update. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-40, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Ms. Haynes here again this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Department is requesting authorization to execute Task Order Number 16 with our wastewater consulting engineers, Burns &amp; McDonald, for assistance in completing Phase 1 of the Water Master Plan Update. This is with a contract amount not to exceed $45,000. This task order will include data collection, review of raw data points, water demand projection analysis, and also an upgraded evaluation of our overall water system. Completion of this task order will assist staff and administration in decision-making on future capital projects, including the construction of a new water tower utilizing the $5 million grant we received last year from the EPA. Additionally, the task order will provide data for consideration of a new water rate structure to fund regular improvements and maintenance of our system, as well as other future capital water infrastructure projects. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from council? No questions from council. Seeing as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Item number 11, 24-R-41. A resolution of the city council designating two economic development-focused areas for the Missouri Department of Transportation's statewide transportation improvement program prioritization. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-41, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Ms. Haynes here to give us an overview again.
Thank you, Mayor.
That was mouthful.
It is. The Community Development Department is requesting a resolution supporting the establishment of an economic development focus area as a basis for scoring projects on MoDOT's highway system for the STIP, which is the statewide transportation improvement program. Projects on the STIP utilize 12 criteria, including safety and volume, statistics, reduction in congestion and travel times, road and bridge condition assessment, and also jurisdictional designation of areas of economic development focus. We have identified the MM corridor south of James River Expressway to I-44, specifically the 500 acres of development known as the Garrett Farm Development and the Oof Developments as the city's focus area. This designation will add an additional 10 points to the scoring of multiple projects along the MM corridor that are currently unfunded, including the MM Bridge over James River Freeway and widening of MM in multiple areas. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gurkhi?
So we are required to do this, or we took upon ourselves to do this, or do we have to pick certain areas, or we just did this for the benefit of it?
It benefits us on the STIP prioritization for any projects that fall along the MM corridor. It is completely voluntary for jurisdictions to take this proactive approach to designate an area of economic development focus, but it will increase the scoring criteria on three major projects that are currently unfunded by 10 points. So that is pretty substantial on the list of like 300-some projects that are currently unfunded on MoDOT's STIP list.
This is specific to MoDOT, then?
Yes, these are specifically only MoDOT highway projects, which would be the M projects, the bridge specifically widening south of James River Expressway, and also widening from James River Expressway all the way up to I-44.
Do we have?
Mr. Mayor. What does it do to flag it as this? Is it just telling them, hey, we think this is going to grow? You need to do something? Or is there any cost with it, or what's happening?
There is no cost associated with it. Like I mentioned, it is completely voluntary for a jurisdiction to take this approach. It will score those projects with an additional 10 points, which basically just moves it up the list by 10 points in addition to the scoring of the other 11 criteria points. So it provides us a little better of a chance that our projects are going to rank higher than other projects on the unfunded needs list.
Is there any reason that we wouldn't want to do this?
There is not. We are the only jurisdiction that is currently advocating and utilizing the scoring criteria to earn the extra 10 points. But to me, it was kind of a no-brainer to go ahead and approach our council with this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. And I can remember from the OTO, the board meetings, this being a discussion, and that 10 points and having that additional 10 points as far as being priority on funding when funding becomes available, I think, is very essential on making sure that our projects score high. And we are in a region, so we have several other people that are going after the same road funding, but this does allow us to have a specific area that we can allow. So to see this come through, so after, if council approves this this evening, does this then go to?
I'll take the resolution back to OTO. The technical review board will be doing their second round of criteria scoring on these projects in the next couple of weeks. So this resolution will move specifically those three projects up the list by 10 points.
And that's a huge leap compared to?
It should be a pretty huge leap on several of those projects.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have any additional questions from council? Seeing there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Moving on to item number 12, 24-R-42. A resolution of the city council awarding the bid for supply of water main materials for Lot Number 7 of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District to Schulte Supply Incorporated. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-42, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Faleek here again this evening.
Hi again. Angel, city engineer. So as Karen shared tonight, she brought the developers' agreement for you to vote on tonight, and this is also related to that. So the city requested sealed bids for waterline materials for the Hankins Farm Lot 7 Development Project as part of the developers' agreement with Walmart. As per the agreement, the city would purchase and install water materials associated with the development and reimburse for all costs of materials and equipment with the installation of that water main. The city received three sealed bids, with Schulte Supply being the lowest bidder in the amount of $52,566. With that said, staff recommends approval. I can answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gurkhi?
Obviously really close on the bids, but this is just, they don't do any labor, any work. It's just to deliver of the materials.
That's right.
Yep. Thanks.
Yeah, that was pretty amazing how close all the bids were. Yeah, they must have talked to each other.
Allusion, maybe.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing that there are none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries seven, zero, zero. Moving on to reports from staff. Ms. Addington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend you all tonight. You all did a great job. There's a lot of heavy lifting in this agenda, and you all did fantastic. So, great job. First and foremost, I want to wish Laura a happy birthday. We greatly appreciate Laura, all your contributions, the dedication of being here on your birthday. So, thank you. Additionally, I would like to direct everyone's attention to the administrators' report for this evening's meeting. This includes information regarding the city's intent to issue a request for qualifications using the Construction Manager at Risk, CMAR, project delivery method for a potential new city hall administrative building. The city is looking to construct this building as an expansion of the existing Builds Department building consistent with Project Exodus, initiatives to bring the city officials and staff back into a more supportive and collaboration with various city departments. So this section of the administrators' report includes some basic background information, as well as the selection criteria that will be used in the evaluation process. I encourage you to review this section of the report. The RFQ is expected to be published next Wednesday, September 18th, and it will be posted through October 4th. This building disclosure and RFQ process is a necessary step to create cost savings similar to the Builds building process, and we understand no decisions have been made. This is just procedural as of right now. Additionally, there is a document in front of you all tonight regarding the police department and comprehensive data related to the roundabout at Heinz and Lynn. So appreciate Chief Sells and his department putting together this information. We have received some concerns regarding that roundabout. So this information has been compiled over the last four years. compiled over the last four years and we have already implemented or started the process on implementing some safety enhancements to that roundabout. So within the next 30 days, we plan to have flashing yield signs that will be installed. I know there have been some Facebook posts as well to help citizens navigate through that roundabout. We will continue to keep everyone updated as part of the admin report process. Another project that is underway is Project Genesis, so all these projects that we've heard about in the workshops are starting to happen. So we have the consultants, Cherry Becker, that were here last week on site for an evaluation preparation, met with all staff related to the project. Very informational, lot of work, so we greatly appreciate not only having them here, working on new software, but also they are suggesting implementations for us for efficiency gains while we wait for new software. So super excited about that. We're off to a great start and we greatly appreciate council's support on the project and the dedication and the attendance that will be required from staff. The city partnered with Ozark's Food Harvest to donate a citywide food drive. Employees and community members donated 310 pounds of food and that is equivalent to 270 meals. So just wanted to thank everyone who gave to that initiative. Your generosity definitely makes a difference. And last but certainly in that lease, we want to, we, we just want to say a shout out to Gary. We miss Gary. We hope he's recovering well and we look forward to seeing him hopefully at the next meeting. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Addington. Do we have any reports from council? Seeing that there are none, last item on the agenda is the mayor. He's a little bit long-winded, but he'll be short tonight. Hopefully everyone paid attention to the, the changes in September. A lot of that was due in part to, some of us here on council will be attending a municipal, the Missouri Municipal League Annual Conference next week. And so it's a conference we get to go to with a lot of educational opportunities, a lot of different networking opportunities and I know those of us that are going, we're learning and so there's a lot of different things that you get to learn, things change. So we appreciate that opportunity to go tonight. I am going to pick on one of our city council members just a little bit because he recently was certified as Republic's newest certified municipal officials. So congratulations to Mr. Fields. He's given me a look of appreciation. That's what it was. But that was 12 hours of independent study, four hours of electives just to get to that point. And so it's a program that's designed to take approximately two years and I think he knocked it out of the park before then. So next week, him and I both will be up on stage representing Republic and so I couldn't be more happy and couldn't be more proud for our city. It's going to be an excellent time, so looking forward to that. Very thankful for that opportunity. Of course, if any other city council members would ever have an interest in that or any of the classes they offer, we have a lot of different seminars, webinars, things you can do at home, all sorts of information that can help us represent the citizens better. Other than that, I wanted to thank all of the city staff for everything on the agenda. As always, excellent work. Thank you, Ms. Addington, for everything tonight. Thank you for Mr. Cash for coming tonight and speaking to us on doing a good job and you know, that pat on the back, that's not just the council, that's the staff, that's to everyone that was in that process from the beginning, the voters that approved it. There's a whole long story, so I'm appreciative to know the history, appreciative of him coming down to tell us that as well. And so thank you for, for everyone that was here this evening and...